Charles Town City Council Meeting is hereby called to order. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's begin the pledge. The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City council members have received copies of the regular meeting minutes from February 19th and the city council workshop from February 27th. Are there any changes, discussion with these minutes? Hearing none, minutes are approved by unanimous consent. We'll now move on to the public comment portion. This portion of the agenda is designed for members of the general public to share thoughts on items of interest in the community. Council members may ask clarifying questions or discuss procedural matters but are not permitted to discuss the policy merits of any issue unless it is scheduled for discussion. People will have two minutes to speak tonight. I do want to note that if things degenerate into personal attacks or you will be asked to stop speaking and your time will be up.
All right, so our first speaker is Chris Kinnon and then Brad McGuire.
Good evening. Petition is the legal avenue through which we, the people, may speak to our officials. And tonight, our voice to the city council is in opposition to the sewer bond. We don't, we do not want you to subsidize heavy industry by our schools. Accordingly, we are here to present a petition of over 1,015 Charlestown freeholders, that's municipal property owners, who carefully signed in opposition in protest to this sewer bond. Again, 1,015 freeholders from Charlestown. This is an extraordinary historic accomplishment. From day one, the citizens of our community have been deliberately excluded from the process around this project. But once we found out what was happening, we started showing up, meeting after meeting, again and again. Have you ever seen anything like this? And now, tonight, here with these petitions, we knocked on door after door after door. This petition is meant to speak to you, to persuade you. We do not want this sewer plan. We want our voices to be heard. It's simple. The city council and the building commission should meet a higher threshold for a vote in a project as transformative and controversial as this one. And it is abundantly clear, the people of Charlestown and Jefferson County are against this sewer bond. A tremendous effort went into bringing this petition to you. I want to thank everybody involved, and I thank the council and the building commission for your careful consideration of these petitions and of this vote. Hear our voices. We do not want smokestacks anywhere near our schoolyards, and we don't want to subsidize foreign corporations. Hear our voices. This should end tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Brad McGuire and then Lori Maloney. All right. Lori Maloney and then Teri Fielamire.
Thank you very much. We are here tonight to ask you to give your people a voice. The sewer permit modification had no chance ever of being fairly evaluated. As I've said in prior meetings, I have faith in the individuals who staff the Department of Environmental Protection. However, they have limits, and I'm told that higher-ups in DEP gave marching orders to make sure this permit modification got approved. Marching orders, despite public comments from people in this room, from your constituents, despite public comment and public letters with legitimate questions and concerns, those letters and concerns literally filled a binder two inches thick. If I could access DEP's phone logs, I would place good money that Rockwell's lawyers were on the phone with people at DEP every other day, asking when this would be completed. Yet, the people of Jefferson County would call DEP and hear from their Public Affairs Office that nobody was allowed to talk about the Rockwell project except for one person in the Public Affairs Office, and that person never returned my calls or emails. Going back to that two-inch binder of questions about the permit, DEP has issued a very brief response, and in my opinion, those answers barely qualify as responses. In one response, it has stated that a more complete explanatory rationale for some limits might ordinarily be included in a fact sheet. However, because this was a minor modification, a fact sheet was not required or prepared. We already know that this permit should have been a major modification because Rockwell intends to use at least three times as much sewer as was applied for. Do you like it when big businesses win because they have the lobbying power and the resources? It is in your reach, as public officials, to make sure no one company or entity can hold the community hostage. I'm going to tell you why you can say no to this bond. It is not in the best interest of your taxpayers and ratepayers. It's that simple. It's not in the best interest of people because it builds capacity for eight Rockwells, which is not in line with our city or county comprehensive plans. If that capacity is not used, who will take the burden of bond repayment? It's not in the best interest because of maintenance. Thank you very much.
All right, so next up, Brad McGuire. Brad McGuire and then Teri Fielamire.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would just like to make some comments this evening in terms of Rockwell. I realize tonight's vote and the majority of this meeting is in regards to sewer, but my thoughts are more towards my family, so I'd like to just kind of address how that would affect them, given if this plant is built. U.S. Army veteran, I've been here for 11 years, settled here after I got out of the Army. I've supported my country since the time I was 18-years-old, still to this day, and I find it hard for myself to wrap my head around the fact that I'll be forced to move from this area that I've had roots in. My family has roots in, I have six children, all go to school here, I'm a resident of Charlestown. Three of my children have cystic fibrosis, which is a degenerative lung disease, and if this were to happen, I'd be forced to move from this area, completely from this area for about a 30-mile radius, from what I've been able to research. I've done research on the causes that pollution would have on my children with CF and others like them that have similar issues, asthma, things of that nature. I've heard some of the pro-Rockwell people speak, and most of the points they've made are pretty unsubstantial, and I would welcome them to address the fact that it's okay for them to put children's health in the way of a foreign country building a factory here, which just does not comprehend or do not understand how that's even possible. And I would just like to address the members of this board and this council, and if they are able and within their power to vote against this, for myself, for my children, and for others like it. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your understanding.
Thank you. After Teri Fielamire, Tim Ross, and then Diane Bluest.
Good evening. I have spoken to you before and listened with interest to the comments made by you and by the utility board in last week's meeting. What surprises me, quite honestly, is that you were going ahead with the vote on the sewer bond when there are so many unanswered questions, like the final routing of the piping, the location of the sewer pumping stations, and it will not be known for months. It is a permit, not for a doghouse, but for a project which will negatively affect tens of thousands of people in the geographical area. If you think that that's bad, look at the implosion of the JCDAs when the facts on this proposal became known. We know that the waste stream from Rockwell will contain a high percentage of industrial waste. Just a short while ago, they assured us it would contain only toilet and sink waste. Rockwell is famous for its lies and half-trues. Remember what they told the Board of Education, that it was for jobs only, and then forgot to say that there's thousands of tons of pollution coming from there. Your concern that Ranson could pull another dirty trick and spot-zone a parcel of land for heavy industrial which would then pump into your system is well-founded and could devastate your treatment plant. Ranson, to me, is a loose cannon and cares very little about others. You heard from the utility board about six-
Sorry, your time's up. Thank you. Tim Ross and Diane Bluest and Juliana Brogna.
I'm not that tall. Hi, I'm Tim Ross. I'm from the county. I don't think that Agenda Item 3240, Concerning the Bond, should even be considered tonight as it violates the Charlestown Codified Ordinances 111.01, Part IV was not followed. That refers to the filing of papers to be introduced at the city council meetings and action thereon by the city clerk. Paragraph A, "All ordinances, resolutions, communications, and other documents for consideration by the city council must be filed in the office of the city clerk, not later than 12:00 noon, three business days immediately preceding the day at the meeting of which is intended to be considered. The mayor and city manager may file the relevant documents no later than 5:00 PM, three business days prior to the meeting in which they're being considered. The written agenda and all related and supporting documentation for consideration at the attending meeting shall be distributed." So, are any of those "related and supporting documentation" that were not put on time? The payment agreement, the WVDEP permit, they were not posted by last Wednesday. So, the question is, are they "related and supporting documentation"? If we go back to the January 22 meeting, I remember Mr. Zygrifa saying, "No permit, no finances." Mr. Byrdingham was worried, "We still have not seen the funding document." He's very concerned about it. Councilwoman Pionessa, she said, "Well, when are we thinking about getting it? Okay, we should have him for the March 4 meeting." And the mayor said, "That's good, because I want several days so I can digest this. I want enough time so I can digest all this." So, I say those documents that were not posted on time are "related and supporting documentation" by the evidence of the statements of you. And they were not on time, the rules were not followed, you shouldn't even be talking about it. When you get to Agenda Item, I hope somebody on this council will take this point for discussion.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you. I had enough. Thank you.
Make it even lower. Good evening, everyone. My name is Diane Bluest. I live between Shepherdstown and Harper's Ferry in the county. I'd like you, if you do vote tonight, I'd like you to vote against the sewer bond, please. But I want to step back a little bit and look at a bigger picture. I'd like you to look at the Rockwell situation and this vote in the larger context of climate change and what we're going to do about it. As our elected officials, you must address the latest data and reporting on climate change. We cannot afford business as usual any longer. Please, we just can't. We cannot afford to have new fossil fuel infrastructure built. We're destroying our children's future. Your children, I don't have children, but grandchildren. We shouldn't have new industries that are powered 100% by fossil fuels. That's just ridiculous in this day and age. And we shouldn't have industries that will pollute as much as Rockwell. Now, everything we do on this earth is causing pollution, and I understand that, but we've got to keep it to a minimum now. This is critical if we want to leave a planet worth living in for our children. The Rockwell effluent will overwhelm your sewer system. It's already at or near full capacity, causing the pollution of the Shenandoah and the Potomac. The rain is not going to lessen with climate change, it is going to increase. So, we're going to have wait-storm water runoff that has to be handled. It's time to think about sustainable, resilient, local development that will help us adapt to climate change and leave something for our children. Rockwell and its waste have no place in Jefferson County. Please, don't ignore the big picture. Think about your children. Thank you.
Thank you. Juliana Brogna, Jamie Gregory, and then Dan Casto.
Good evening, council. My name is Juliana Brogna. I'm an aspiring farmer and a resident of Kearneysville. At the last city council meeting, I alerted you that CTUB had not honored a FOIA request that was submitted 11 weeks prior. We received that FOIA last week, and I am sorry to tell you that the lack of transparency and evasion of legitimate public scrutiny continues. Materials that we believe responsive to our requests were not provided, and attorney-client privilege was claimed. However, we have disturbing evidence that someone on the city council, or perhaps the utility board or its staff, leaked the same information that we legally sought and that was denied to us, to another group as recently as last Friday. On Saturday night, an organization called Jefferson County Prosperity posted a message on Facebook attacking the petition presented here tonight, claiming that the West Virginia Code cited, quote, "has been deemed likely unconstitutional by Charlestown's own law firm," end quote. We believe this group is referring to legal advice prepared for the city which has not been made available to the public. How and why did this group and the individuals behind it receive this confidential information? Why wasn't it not made available to the public in the FOIA return that I told you about two weeks ago? We specifically asked for, quote, "any letters or communications CTUB has received from Rockwell, including but not limited to emails and letters between legal counsel and anyone at Rockwell and his counsel." We believe that some of the same legal documents and communications surrounding them should have been included in our FOIA return. Now that a member of the public has seen or has knowledge of the contents of this memo, the attorney-client privilege is negated. The public should be allowed to see this document tonight, especially if the council intends to heed whatever advice it contains. This breach of public trust and the message that it sends to the people in this room and to the citizens of Jefferson County is that there is a preferential and ethically questionable flow of information from city council to some members of the public while denying other requests that are properly made through the FOIA process. A lack of transparency and preferential treatment, that is the legacy of this project.
Jamie Gregory, Dan Casto, and then Barbara Kraft. Jamie Gregory? Okay. Dan Casto, Barbara Kraft.
So, tonight, we have C-CAR, Concerned Citizens Against Reality. The reality is, I FOIA'd documents from the city of Charlestown, not CTUB, and Daryl Hennessy gave me emails. There's nothing, it's an email from John Stump dated October 18. I had it, I wasn't sharing it with you guys, you guys could FOIA'd it too. So, the reality tonight is, Rockwell's coming here. The only question is, are you going to destroy the financial stability of this town and its utility board in order for some folks, mostly from Shepherdstown, who aren't going to be the pay, be the right-
If we don't have order and respect everyone's right to speak, we will clear the room.
So, mostly, I hope I get my full time, mostly people from Shepherdstown who have been colluding with our mayor on a petition that violates state code and doesn't even matter. Tonight's not a public hearing, folks. That public hearing was held back in May. All of you know that. Your attorney back there, he certainly knows that. Why, so, and by the way, did you get 30% Chris? Did you get 30% of the folks here, freeholders? You didn't.
Yes.
You didn't. So, you didn't do it properly. Now, how many people live in Charlestown? It's less than 20% of the population of Charlestown. Gathering signatures under false pretenses with our mayor, colluding with them under false pretenses, and all of you know. Thank you.
So, next up, yeah. All right, everyone. So, Jamie Gregory, then Barbara Kraft and Jerry Craft.
I'll be brief. I'm on the left, from the left side of Liberty Street. Lived in the county for 40 years. I attended the first CTUB workshop and listened to what was brought up there and questions, and I still have the same questions here today, March 4th, that I had, I think it was August or September. If I was purchasing something, I couldn't certainly purchase it based on how much information has come to light or been flushed out, sorry about the pun, since the time that that meeting happened. So, there's a lot of questions to be answered. Capacity, what's in, what might go in to the sewer lines? So, I ask you not to enable heavy polluting industry and no corporate welfare. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Kraft, Jerry Craft, and then Grant Perlman.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Kraft. This is my husband, Jerry. We are Charlestown homeowners. We signed that petition. We're not from Shepherdstown, neither is Mr. Gregory, who just spoke, and a whole lot of others of us. I'm going to throw out my prepared speech. I just wanted to address one more time that we are really opposed to rushing this sewer bond thing on the grounds of, what is the hurry? Okay? It's all about Rockwell, right? So, let them build a sewer line if they want one so bad, okay? We still don't have enough information. We do not know where those 46,000-some gallons per day of industrial waste are going to go in our sewer. How is that going to work? Nobody has answered that question yet. We don't want to become another chemical valley. We have seen this in West Virginia, when Freedom Industries packed up, declared bankruptcy, and left devastation when their chemicals leaked into the Alka River. We don't want that to happen here. We're a rural historic county. People come here to reenact the Civil War, they come for Harper's Ferry and the abolitionists and all that history here. Why would we ruin that with smokestacks and pollution, put our children's health at risk, our health at risk? I want you to please listen to us when we beg you to not be complicit in what's going on here. I do not know who's putting pressure on this city to do this, but resist it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Grant Perlman and then Lou Perlman.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us all a chance to speak with you this evening. My name is Grant Perlman, and I do live outside Shepherdstown. I guess that makes me a county resident. Across the country, in West Virginia and now here in Jefferson County, the myth-riddled, high-stakes game of economic development has transformed communities and generated great wealth, especially for the companies themselves. After all, the system was designed by and primarily serves those businesses. Make no mistake, the invisible hand of the free market is nowhere to be seen. The increasingly visible hands of this system are manipulating our government and reaching into taxpayers' pockets. The structure of this bond doesn't change the fact that our state taxes will be used for what I can only call, what the gentleman said, corporate welfare. The vast majority of residents I spoke with while gathering petitions believe that Rockwell should pay for its own infrastructure. It's called a cost of doing business. As elected stewards of public resources and caretakers of public health and safety, you're in the difficult position of having to make a decision that will have far-reaching consequences, no matter your choice. Listen, then, to the voices of your constituents, your neighbors. They are saying in large numbers, "Vote no on the bond."
All right, Lou Perlman. Joseph Bocciaro. And then Ms. Maloney, your name is on here a second time, I assume, yeah. All right, and then after that will be Sharon Wilt.
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor. Since August, I have been appearing before you along with many other citizens. The first time I came was as a bewildered engineer. I could not understand how a sewer system, or any system, could be designed without knowing the inputs. Little did we realize just how little we knew at the time, or how much was being withheld from us. It may have been Councilman Tolbert who wisely said in one of your last meetings that the Rockwell sewer bond issue is difficult to resolve because every week, there is new information. In that meeting, the new information was that there was a huge discrepancy in the volume of sewage that the plant would output. Then, there was the disclosure that there is a combination of industrial sewage and normal restroom-type sewage. Well, now we know, there is yet new information that has come to light, and I do not see how it would be possible for you to vote on the sewer bond issue tonight as a result. First, we understand that the city of Ranson has now passed an ordinance allowing the rezoning of properties without public scrutiny. Based on their past behavior, we believe that this could lead to the creation of more industrial uses. How can you design a sewer system for yet-to-be-planned factories? Secondly, we understand that the city of Charlestown, in its own ordinances, requires separation of industrial and normal sewage. How can you build just one sewer line to handle both flows? Don't both of these issues have to be resolved? Don't, we also still need to know what the sewage is comprised of and its temperature, how this will affect the treatment plant and the existing sewer lines, the piping, the pumping stations. So, we have hundreds of signatures, over 1,000, on a petition to you to require four-fifths of your council to approve the sewer bond, and we expect that this will be honored tonight and that further due diligence be made in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Wilt. And Sharon Wilt, and then, is it Ruth Hatch?
I'm Sharon. Ruth is next. Good evening, council. I've been here many times. I do live in the county, but one day, it may be Ranson because I'm directly across the street. It's less than a half a mile where Rockwell proposes their plant. There's 250 homes there with over 1,200 people. I don't know one person in there that wants that polluting plant across the street and their kids to go to school there. I've stood before you many times. Tonight, my agenda is the sewer bond. What is now up to $16 million, why would we, as a community, take on a $16 million project when the company, Rockwell, can pay for this themselves? Like they have done with the water, Rockwell has not given any information as to what would be going into the waterways. The devil is in the details. We, as Jefferson County residents, are unaware of what those details are because Rockwell will not provide them. The proposed 1,400-acre industrial park is just that. This land has sat for decades and undoubtedly will sit that long, or longer. We are pushing our luck with this, and luck is for amateurs. You all are professionals. And holding the future of air clean air, clean water, and our county's future for the youth in your hands, we, as Jefferson County residents, have to rely on each one of you. The proposed sewer bond is a heavy debt that we should not have to carry for years to come when Rockwell, as a multi-billion-dollar company, can and have stated they can and would pay for this themselves. So, let them. So, I'm asking you, vote no. You have no information to vote anything else but a no. Thank you.
After Ruth is Ray Bruning and then Dave Yowzie.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ruth Hatcher, and I have lived in Jefferson County for 40 years, and I live in Ranson. Okay? Please vote no on the sewer bond. I want to tell you a story. Last Thursday, I went to Johns Hopkins Nodle, Pulmonary Nodle Clinic. My husband goes there once a year for a CT scan, a low dose, to make sure he does- My husband goes there once a year for a CT scan, a low dose, to make sure he doesn't have lung cancer. So I showed my husband's physician the list of emissions coming out of Rockwool's toxic stacks, and you know what he said? He said, "Why would anybody build this near people? Why?" He was shocked. "Why would you build this across the street from a school? Why do you build this near people?" He was very concerned and he just, you could tell he was mad. And you think we're mad? He was mad as a physician because he sees people with lung cancer. He knows what those chemicals are that are coming up, and he was not very happy. So he asked, so he starts to examine my husband a few minutes, and then he stops, and he says, "Oh, by the way, they're going to poison your water, too." And that's exactly what his physician at Johns Hopkins Pulmonary Nodule Clinic said to us. You think he knows a thing or two? I believe he does, by George. So have you ever, any one of you, asked your physician, is toxic emissions and polluted water good for you? Have you asked your personal doctor if this is good for your health and the quality of your life here? Have you done that? You should. Do you want our community become a toxic community and to be on an Aaron Brockford story? Is that what you want?
Ma'am, thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Ray Bruning, Ray Bruning, Dave Yowsey, Tom Guido. No, 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 Ray Bruning first.
Thank you, council, and I know it's going to be a long night for you, so I'll try to keep this brief. First of all, I'd like to say that we were in Mississippi. We talked to the utility board. Nobody's talked to the utility board that I'm aware of. If you want the answer, pick up the phone and call. If you don't want the answer, I guess you don't call. There's a lot of facts and a lot of hyperbole here, and you guys are smart enough to figure out which is which, and I'm not going to speak to Rockwool because that's not what's at stake here. It's the sewer bond. Rockwool will be paying for their sewer, either way. Because what's not going to be paid for is the additional infrastructure needed going forward. So we can either take this zero-interest bond that was offered to us simply because they had a big rate payer to help pay for this by the state. That's the reason it was offered by the state. Or we can let Rockwool build their own sewer line, which they will. It's not going to stop Rockwool, and then we can put the rate payers on the hook for all the additional infrastructure requirements and needs. Obviously, they only got 18% of the rate payers that would actually support a rate increase, even being misled and not telling them it was a rate increase. So obviously, the majority of the people who pay rates don't want to see their rates go up and don't have a problem with the Rockwool sewer bond. And thank you for the time. I'll give you two minutes back.
Thank you for the speech. Next up, Dave Yowsey, Dave Yowsey, Tom Guido, and then Megan Meehan.
Thank you, council members. My name is Dave Yowsey. Rockwool began site work in November of 2017, and since that time has moved forward in an open and transparent fashion with the construction of its state-of-the-art insulation manufacturing plant. It has met or exceeded all of the commitments that it made when it entered into agreements with state and local officials to build its plant in Jefferson County. Its construction is on schedule, and the plant is expected to begin operations in mid-2020. Rockwool has requested that the Charles Town Utility Board, or CTUB, accept and treat its domestic sewage and industrial wastewater, and CTUB has an obligation to provide that service. CTUB applied for and was granted approval to receive the industrial wastewater. CTUB did not need authority to receive Rockwool's domestic sewage, and CTUB is obligated to provide domestic sewer service regardless of any appeal of the CTUB permit modification that allows it to accept Rockwool's industrial effluent. A sewer line must be constructed between Rockwool and CTUB treatment works so that CTUB can comply with its Rule 5.5 obligation to provide, without prejudice, sewer treatment for customers in its service territory. In addition, pursuant to the purchase agreement whereby Charles Town acquired the Jefferson County and City of Ranson sewer systems, Charles Town assumed all agreements which would include a sewer to serve Rockwool and for which the city of Ranson incurred sewer design costs of approximately $1 million. The sewer line can be constructed using state funds at no cost to rate payers, and it can be constructed in a way as so as to leave room for additional customers and additional revenues for CTUB for the benefit of its existing customers. Or the city can refuse to construct the line and instead reimburse Rockwool for the line that Rockwool constructs in accordance with the PSC rules. Depending on future development in Jefferson County, CTUB customers could end up constructing multiple parallel lines in the future to serve other customers in the same area.
Tom. Tom, Tom Guido, Megan Meehan, David Levine.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Tom Guido. I'm from Shenandoah Junction. I'm not an activist. I'm not an environmentalist. I'm not an extremist. I'm a dad. I have four children. Two of them attend T.L. Lowry Elementary School. The other two will follow them. They will spend the entirety of their student careers in this school system unless I am forced to move them. Quite a few years ago, I worked in industry for a company you would all know the name of. Most of you would have their product in your homes. It was a biodegradable, clean product. But what I saw caused me to change the path of my career. Containment reservoirs leaking and seeping into the groundwater. Early retirements for nerve damage. I used to have to monitor the sewer output alarm. And you can imagine, this was 20-plus years ago. You can imagine, at my age, that was my responsibility. A big red light would go off if there was too much acid or there was too much caustic going out in the sewer, and I literally would have to go over with 55-gallon drums and try to neutralize the sewer water. What I can tell you from my experience is that self-monitoring doesn't work, and there's not enough regulation in industry. It's that simple. In my new career of over 22 years, I've been managing risk on a national scale. And what I can tell you is that, my perspective, is this project is not worth the risk. It's not worth the burden on the systems. It's not worth the risk to the health of one child, let alone the 12,000 in the county. There's plenty of science to support that increased levels of PM 2.5 and volatile organic compounds will increase the risk, especially at these levels. It's not worth it. I implore you to act on behalf of the children of this county, the ones that can't move or won't or grew up here. Act now on their behalf, and please vote no for the sewer bond. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, Megan Meehan, David Levine, Kai Newkirk.
My name is Megan, and I have knocked on over 100 doors to help stop Rockwool. And today, we are here to vote on whether or not for the sewer bond, for the sewer bond. I'm only nine years old, so I cannot vote. So I have to rely on your vote. Please vote no. We will be stuck with this for longer than you think.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Levine, and according to Jefferson County's paper of record, I am a brilliant Yale-educated entrepreneur. I'm here really to talk about one thing, which is that this vote is not a vote on a sewer bond. And all of you that might be on the fence about it, please don't think about this as a vote for financing. This is a vote for an outdated, thoroughly discredited economic development program that most of the developed world is abandoning. It's being replaced by what is called ecosystem development, where the public officials and administrators, citizens, genuine investors in the community, which is the large businesses that are already here, intend to stay here and employ people, all work together to lift every resident and every stakeholder. I've been incredibly impressed with this group, particularly the ones I've had time to really spend time with. Councilmember Talbit talked about the Gordian knot of Jefferson County. We have very low unemployment. We have high poverty. How are we going to solve that problem? A gentleman before me talked about Behalia, Mississippi as a model. Behalia, Mississippi not only has a much higher employment rate, but has twice the poverty rate. There is absolutely no reason for us to import these economic development models to this county. I want everyone to understand that we have an opportunity to lead the world in this transformation that's about to happen into clean manufacturing. I moved here because I believed that this place could do it. I'm having a grandson in April. I really believe that my children would stay here. Please vote no on the sewer bond. Thank you.
So next up is Kai Newkirk, Mike Donnelly, Sean Amos.
Good evening. My name is Kai Newkirk. I'm a Shepherdstown guy, and some people might not think so, but our voices matter in this fight, too. And I have a brother who lives a couple miles from where the factory would be built, and a nephew who lives a little bit further. And I think others have spoken to, and more will, I'm sure, to the question of the impacts of what this factory would mean in terms of people's health in our community. I want to speak to the question of democracy. I think folks in our county and around the country are grappling with the question right now of whether, in this country, we have government that responds to the citizens, the majority, the people, or to big money special interests. And that question is going to be decided in part here tonight about what happens in our community. And in all my years, I grew up here since four, I was four years old, my family's been around here, I've never seen anything like what is happening in this community now. You can't drive around without seeing signs that say, "Stop, Rockwool." Do you see people come out to a meeting like this on other issues? There's a movement happening here, and it represents the majority of people in this county. And to those who question the numbers that we have on this petition, those numbers represent more people, to my knowledge, than voted for any of you who are sitting here right now. That's legitimacy. That's democracy. And if you haven't got that many people on a petition, I suggest you do the work. I was out there talking to those folks. That represents the will of this community. And you have a decision tonight to make whether you're going to respond to that and represent the kind of democracy that we all believe we should have in this country, or whether you're going to do the bidding of a big-money corporation from Denmark. I implore you to recognize this opportunity to leadership. Listen to the people. Listen to the majority. Act as we should in a democracy, and vote this down.
Thank you. Mike Donnelly. Sean Amos. Mike Donnelly. If not Sean Amos, and then Christine Marshall.
Good evening, council. I'm here to ask you tonight to look into your heart and to think about those who truly are the least of these. I know many of you at the table are thinking to yourself that this has to do with a sewer bond, that it has to do with a pipe that someone's going to lay in the ground somewhere. But what this is really about is about the least of these. We've heard people who have said that this comes here, that they're going to have to leave this place, but the least of these can't sell their house and move. We've heard about people who go to this school. Many of you could take your children and go elsewhere, but the least of these cannot do that. To whom much has been given, much will be expected. And one day, this is going to go before a judge. You all know that this is going to go before a judge. And that judge is going to say, "What about the least of these?" A hundred years ago, Ms. Palnessa, you would not have been allowed to vote. You were the least of these, but somebody had to have a voice for you. Seventy years ago, Mr. Talbit, you and I could not go to school together. You were among the least of these, but somebody needed to have a voice for you. Up until five years ago, I couldn't get married, but somebody had to have a voice for me. And so I am asking you now to consider the least of these. One day, someone is going to say to you, "What did you do for those people?" And you will say, "When did I poison you? When did I drain anything your house was worth in Fox Glen? When did I make your family sick and send them to the hospital?" And that judge will say, "As much as you did it to the least of these, you did it to me." This is not about a sewer bond. It's about listening to the voices of the people who do not have a voice and being a voice from them. Anybody could check a box. Anybody can look at black and white and decide, but it's a judge's job to do that. And one day, you will be called into question and asked, "What did you do for the least of these?" I beg you, do not look at this as a sewer bond. Think about what you're doing to these people. Thank you for your comments. Thank you so much.
Christine Marshall. Christine Marshall, Tracy Cannon, and Chris Tandy.
I wanted to talk a little bit about lack of transparency. I've noticed a pattern of documents filed just prior to important meetings, which give the appearance of concealing something. On October 1st, 2018, the Charles Town Utility Board filed the MPDES permit modification application to accommodate Rockwool's industrial wastewater. Thirty minutes before an important council workshop, which was to explain the details of the permit modification, filing minutes before the meeting prevented the council from viewing the documents and thus forming questions beforehand. On Friday, March 1st, 2019, the DEP, at 3:05 PM, sent the approved MPDES permit modification to Rockwool. At 3:30, the DEP officially issued the permit modification. Monday, Monday, March 4th, the permit modification is publicly posted on the DEP website, again, just prior to tonight's very important public meeting. Approximately 20 of 400 individuals were emailed the responsiveness survey, answers to their questions from the West Virginia DEP. 380 individuals still do not, have not received this important document. Emissions of important details. On October 1st, 2018, at the Charles Town City Council Workshop meeting, CTUB environmental lawyer, Mr. Lewis, talks how West Virginia public utilities like CTUB are obligated to provide service within their service area unless there is a moratorium or other significant reasons. CTUB lawyer, Mr. Shingleton, also on occasion notes that, under PSC rules 150 CSR 5, Section 5.5, that public utilities are required to extend utilities to those who request service. Neither Mr. Lewis or Shingleton provide evidence that these PSC rules apply to industrial users. Mr. Shingleton noted that he assumes, he assumes the rule applies to industrial users. In the responsiveness summary, the West Virginia DEP answers exactly this question in number 14. Five months later, they say, "Where feasible, the city of Charles Town may be required to provide sewer service by the Public Service Commission. However, this is limited to sanitary sewer service or domestic wastewater. It is the understanding of the West Virginia..."
Your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Tracy Cannon. And then Chris Tandy and Barbara Fuller.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak this evening. I really appreciate it. My name is Tracy Cannon. When I was 10 years old, my dad brought me to Charlestown, West Virginia, and I loved it here. I thought it was beautiful, and I said, "Dad, when I grow up, I'm going to live there." Now, I don't actually live in Charlestown, I live in Hedgesville, but the same thing still applies. I wanted to come here because of this beautiful town. Infrastructure for Rockwell has already started to be paid for by West Virginia citizens, against their wishes in most part. The pipeline in Berkeley County and Morgan County is being built at ratepayers' expense. The sewer line should not be getting paid for by taxpayers who object to Rockwell in the first place. Charlestown, not Charles Town, is the power forcing all this on us. The sewer line, Rockwell, and the whole thing, the pipeline and all. It's no coincidence that Rockwell would use fracked gas and coal in huge quantities. Charlestown wants a market for these fossil fuels. This area thrives because people who come to visit see the hills, the history, the horses, the farms, the beauty of this area. People want to come here, to this area, to Charlestown. People are leaving the main part of West Virginia where Charleston is, where fossil fuels get produced and where factories are, and where the air is bad and the water's bad. People are leaving, they're evacuating in huge numbers. The population of West Virginia is going down, but the population of the eastern panhandle is increasing because we have those beautiful things, this beautiful area.
Thank you, your time is up.
Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Chris Tandy. Barbara Fuller. Jennifer King.
Good evening, my name is Chris Tandy. I appreciate the opportunity to put in a comment here. I'm from Loudoun County, right across the border in Virginia. I'm here to ask you all to please try to stop the Rockwell factory any way that you can, whether it's the sewer bond or otherwise. People are worried about this in Loudoun County. We have a thriving, we have a lot of similarities between Loudoun County and Jefferson County. Both scenic lovely areas, a lot of really nice people in both places. We have a thriving agricultural and winery and brewery industry over in Loudoun County. I, you know, I don't come over here to take away jobs from anyone, but I want, if I could leave you all with one thought, I wonder how many people from Jefferson County work in wineries and breweries in Loudoun County? I'm guessing it's more than, more jobs than the factory would provide. Please do the right thing, this is a regional problem. Please, please try to, try and stop Rockwell, and thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Fuller. Jennifer King. Jay Mansfield.
Good evening, my name is Barbara Fuller. I am a resident of Kearneysville, an Air Force retired wife. My family retired here in 2007. My children attended Jefferson County schools, they went to North Jefferson, they are now currently in the high school. My question is, why do we have citizens walking around with a petition in February and March when it should have been submitted months ago? Who told them it was okay? Here's a fact, this permit has been approved, which moves the service line forward. To approve this bond is the best option of any others. It is fiscally responsible for the sewer customers.
Jay Mansfield. And then Hannah Ammet.
Good evening. I hope council members have had a chance to read my email, which details about 25 questions and concerns outstanding on the Route 9 Rockwell sewer bond. There's actually more questions and concerns than that. There is no way in good conscience a vote can be held by this council or the building commission until these questions and concerns can be answered completely and clearly. Your advisors continue not to be forthright. Steptoe is advising almost every party concerned in this deal. Think about why the Board of Education immediately sought new counsel last year. Rockwell is a fast-tracked and cohort state project. Through the ransom foias, we see the collusion of our government, including the DEP. Although the DEP has granted the permit, there are still unresolved issues with it. The permit states the DEP and PSC agree that Charlestown, that Charlestown is not required to accept industrial waste. Rockwell evaded a major modification by submitting false flow figures. This evasion caused the DEP not to thoroughly examine and report corrosive contaminants such as salts and chlorides. Why there is only, why is there only an analysis of JUI water for metals, et cetera, and no analysis of actual Rockwell waste? This council has not hired their own council for water and sewer utilities yet. I urge you to seek the council before making a vote to ensure you are making the right decisions. I know some council members just want this to be over with. This got dumped onto Charlestown's lap. I'm sorry this is happening to you, but this is happening to ordinary citizens as well. Some of you will not be running again for council. The decisions you make tonight will be your legacy. Err on the side of caution. I describe my research into these issues as putting together an ugly nightmarish puzzle that has missing pieces. Every day, more puzzle pieces are found, and the picture becomes clearer. There are many battles in this Rockwell war. This bond battle is for the truth. We have to pull the truth out of these organizations that are involved. We don't have all the answers yet, we don't have the truth yet. I know you all are tired, but please don't give up yet.
Thank you for your time.
Please do not give, please do not vote.
Jay Mansfield. Jay Mansfield, Hannah Ammet, and Christine Wymer.
This is the county where bad ideas come to die. Slavery did, pollution will very soon. My name's Jay Mansfield, I'm from Jefferson County. I did worldwide bioterrorism surveillance for the Department of Defense. I went to Bahalia, Mississippi, saw a guy smoking a cigarette, and I went to Milton, Ontario, and I saw a guy smoking a cigarette. And I asked both of them, "Do you have cancer?" They said, "No." So therefore, smoking does not cause cancer. I'm here for the parents of children with asthma, COPD, cystic fibrosis, muscular dystrophy, and the minority children whose fresh air is in jeopardy. Vote no. We're having a scientific symposium on air pollution on April 27th at the Harper's Ferry Clarion, all day, you're all invited. Doctors and health professionals from Johns Hopkins University, Georgetown, Harvard, University of Maryland, and WVU, you'll all have seats there if you answer the invitation. This is the county where bad ideas come to die. This county mandates that people receive water and sewer service, but they don't mandate that we receive air that we can breathe. Sewer for Rockwell is not a mandate. Our African-American population is situated right in the middle of the hot zone where the Rockwell site is located. Families of covers color suffer three times higher incidence and prevalence of asthma and die 20 times more often than white kids from asthma complications. The placement of the Rockwell plant is racist. It may be accidentally racist, but it's still racist. A hundred and eighty thousand times higher pollution with a five times higher minority population density. The people living near the Rockwell plant won't have fresh air, none, and the minority population there will suffer. Exposure time counts. It's not one year, it's 12 years of schooling and developing loans. When one calculates the number of children and the number of...
Sarah, thank you for your comments. So after Hannah is Christine Wymer, and then Emily Dragon.
Hi, oops, hello. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I apologize if I repeat stuff that everyone said. I made the mistake of bringing my almost two-year-old here earlier, and I realized after you started screaming "Cracker" in the back at the very beginning that I made a mistake, so I removed him from the situation. I hope that everyone here can really look at what's going on and realize mistakes have been made. It's not too late to vote no. Not saying mistakes were made here, but really dig into the information. I'm here because I'm a mom, I live in Charlestown, I live right next to Ebbets Run, where my kids fish and play and swim in the stream, and we moved here for the beauty. We want to keep it clean, keep it fresh. My daughter has extreme eczema and allergies, and she is prone to asthma, so I don't want to see my little three-year-old struggling to breathe. Thank you, please vote no from a mom.
And then Emily Dragon. And Matt McKinney.
When I think of this valley, I think of courage. I think of the courage that I learned at Camp Frame, where I was at Delaware, and I learned about the indigenous people who live in this land, in our valley, and their courage. I think of the courage of John and Isaac, the first Europeans who crossed the Blue Ridge into our valley, the courage it must have taken for them to enter an unknown land, meet unknown people, and live with them. I think of the courage of George Washington. George Washington loved this county from middleway to Shepherdstown. I think of the courage it must have taken him to lead a new country into the unknown. I think of the courage and the bravery that it took him to stand up for what he believed in, the representation of the will of the people by the elected officials. I think of the bravery of Megan Mehan, who knocked on hundreds of doors. She's afraid of dogs. Lots of people in this county have dogs. She climbed stair after stair and rang on the doorbells so that people could sign a petition, a petition that expressed the will of the people. Though a misguided few may want to laugh at those people, a lawyer in a back room who was not elected by the people, who does not care about the will of the people, may discount the petitions, the petition, and the people that it represents. I ask you tonight to find the courage. Find the courage to represent the will of the people. Represent the will of the people that this petition represents. Draw on the courage of the people of this valley. Draw on the courage of the people of this movement. Draw on the courage of Megan Mehan. Draw on the courage of George Washington and all of the courageous souls in between from this county.
Thank you for your comments.
Who have stood up and fought for what is right and they believe in. Representation of the people by their elected officials. Thank you.
Matt McKinney. And I believe David Tab.
Hello, my name is Emily Dragon, and I'm a resident of Shenandoah Junction in Jefferson County. Thank you for letting me speak to you at such an important moment. At the last workshop, I listened as some of you asserted that this vote isn't about supporting heavy industry, that it was simply about what made the most sense for the sewer project itself, that you are confident that the citizens of this county won't get blindsided by another Rockwell even if this line were to be built as recommended, eight times the size it needs to be. I'm not so confident. It doesn't stretch the imagination at all to see that having a resource like the proposed sewer line already built into an area with essentially whatever zoning it wants will be incredibly enticing to a city like Branson, who has already shown that has no appetite for engaging with, listening to, or acting on what the rest of the county and its entities envision for their future. Your council is one of the very few places in our government that doesn't have legally mandated blinders like the DEP that can look at the situation in its entirety, all of the data, and see that something is very, very wrong, that the numbers don't add up because they aren't giving you the real ones. To say that this is only about sewer is doing yourselves a great disservice. Please do not willfully put on blinders for yourself in order to justify avoiding making a hard decision based on the larger picture. When you vote, please remember that your own lawyer said there was a chance that you might not even have to build this line because of its financial burden. He doesn't recommend it because it's not without risks, but what are the risks of exploring whether or not you even have this obligation? If it's just seeing, if it's just seeing your day in court and then ending up back here, then that risk is far outweighed by the reward. Thank you very much.
Matt McKinney, David Tab, Morgan Sell.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. Appreciate the opportunity to let me speak. It was a short time ago, I believe, that there was a lot of effort from some good people in getting your position consolidated, getting the utility board consolidated. I believe that an effort was to take care of the ratepayer, to look out for the interest of the ratepayer. I ask that you pick up this sewer bond, you vote yes on this sewer bond, to continue the efforts of being in interest of the ratepayers, to let this financing go and then have to pay for the line ourselves on the ratepayer's back. I mean, that does not sound like that's a viable option for the people of Jefferson County. I also ask that anybody that is on this board that may show a conflict of interest in this matter, please recuse themselves before this vote tonight. I would appreciate the attention of that matter. Thank you, guys.
David Tab. Morgan Sell.
Thank you once again. You have listened to us a little bit. You have allowed us to speak, and for that, I am very appreciative. Tonight is historic, just like the town. It's going to go one way or the other. It's up to you guys. Can you truly sit here and allow this to happen? There's so many legal things. If the industrial waste permit has been approved and has not been put on your website to the people at least 72 hours, that's three days, business days, prior to, you cannot use that as evidence to come before a decision. End of story. So you have to assume that it has not been approved. Furthermore, you had no decision in ransom doing what they did, nor will you have that decision afterwards. How can you put in a sewer line that you have no decision on what's going to be placed on it and what demands are going to be put on you? Also, if this system fails because they didn't disclose what kind of chemicals, do you not think that that's going to come burden on the ratepayer? Furthermore, the bond issue, if it comes from the state, has to be presented to the state for everyone to say, "Public comment." If it was not posted in every media status, then you cannot approve it, period, because it's going to go back to the state if the ratepayer doesn't pay it.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Morgan Sell. Kurt Compton. Ned Marshall.
When I was walking the avenues of Charlestown, visiting neighbors and friends, God was with me. Jesus was there too. I saw God in the faces of young children, and I saw Jesus in the presence of a 98-year-old woman turning 99 on December 23rd this year. I asked her what she thought about the world today. I walked alongside my neighbors and friends, knocking doors, collecting signatures, over and over again, never disheartened, always replenished, always thinking about, "What does the Lord require of you, and what does the Lord require of me?" If you don't mind, I'd like to say a prayer. Dear gracious and loving God, please watch over the council as they make these challenging decisions. Please also, God, watch over the residents and property owners of Charlestown as they move through this life, and God also please watch over all the people who are fighting for clean air and water, for their families, for their children, and for their future grandchildren, and for all people who may have respiratory challenges like my son. God, I also ask that you watch over me and my family as we navigate this difficult time in our life, as we start to learn and do and get closer with you. God, I just ask that you protect us and watch over us as we follow this path in your name and in your way. Jesus, I see that you walked with those who had less. I see that you helped the poor... I see that you helped the poor and you gave to the needy. Jesus, I ask that you please use your way as an example for others to follow. God, I do also ask for prayers for folks who are lost and who are trying to find their way. God, I ask you to support them if they are ready and willing to receive you into their lives. I will walk with you on this path, and I will fight for people whose voices are sheltered by their economic activity, by their low income, and their Title I schools. God, I ask that you protect all the children in North Jefferson Elementary from this day on. God, I ask that the will of the people be respected and honored. And God, I also ask that you watch over the powers that are behind these mechanisms of destruction. May you continue to send forth more and more strength to the protectors, to the folks who are standing up for themselves and for their county, for our little slice of heaven that we have here in West Virginia. God, please, I ask myself again, what does the Lord require of me to seek justice and love kindness and walk humbly with my God? Amen.
Kurt Compton, Ned Marshall, James Leach.
Good evening. I'll be blessedly brief. My name's Kurt Compton. I've been a resident of Jefferson County since 1987. The emotional appeals I find are very unfair to the city council. The time for that has long since passed, unfortunately, well, for better or worse, depending on your position on the issue. The reality of the situation is that Rockwell is here, Rockwell is now. They will have their sewer. I think we all know that. One way or the other, it's going to happen. Now, the only question is, how will that occur? What's the best way to do this? I think clearly the sewer bond offers remedial repair and improvements to existing infrastructure in Northern Jefferson, and also has the added benefit of the new infrastructure that will be in place to facilitate the Rockwell facility. Which is the best way to do that? We're either on one hand going to take the benefits that Rockwell will offer us in what I've just laid out, or we will not. If we don't, the ratepayers will suffer, and Rockwell will get their sewer anyway. There's only one clear answer to this, and that is to vote yes on the sewer bond. Thank you.
Ned Marshall, James Leach, and Danny Lutz.
Hello, I'm Ned Marshall. I've been here before, as you know. Rockwell represents a life and death threat for me. I have a suppressed immune system, and the pollution from this plant could kill me. Last week, I met a new neighbor. They bought their house in September. It seemed to stop Rockwell signs, but thought they were just more of the many political signs all over the place. Their realtor had not said anything about Rockwell. She's pregnant with her first baby, and they are terrified, worrying, losing sleep, crying. Had they known, they wouldn't have bought. Their new child will go to North Jefferson Elementary School if they stay. This is the sort of trap we're in now. Move or jeopardize our health, maybe our lives. I think that you have been listening to the citizens of Jefferson, what the citizens of Jefferson County have said. There's been a huge groundswell of opposition to Rockwell that says it must be stopped. Not that we want or hope that it can be, but that it must be stopped. Our responsibilities to the children and teachers and ourselves are that we should never allow any heavy industry right across the road from an elementary school. Health organizations, large and small, recommend strongly against this. Air and water pollution know no political boundaries. This council didn't initiate or in any way cause this dangerous mess, but you have the opportunity.
Sorry, your time's up. Thank you.
You have the opportunity to stop it. Please do.
James Leach, Danny Lutz.
I'm retired Special Warfare Intelligence Analyst, Second Class, James Leach, and live in Charlestown. I'm here as a living specimen on what may be to come to some of Jefferson County's citizens, young and old, if Rockwell's plan is to put into operation. And I will try and sway you to vote no for the sewer bond. When I served in Iraq, part of my job was to burn shredded classified documents, printer toner, imaging heads, and fusers. While doing the job, other things would be burned in the pit. I did this approximately five days a week for just under 30 minutes a day for six months, and this is what happened. I was exposed to 12 of the 20 toxins and byproducts Rockwell's projected to mass produce in the tons. Nitrogen oxide, sulfuric oxide, carbon monoxide, VOCs, particle matter less than 10 microns, particle matter less than 2.5 microns, carbon dioxide equivalents, lead, total hazard air pollutants from aldehyde, hexane, and benzene. I may have been exposed to more as the investigation is still ongoing. My symptoms, I developed symptoms of toxic brain injury, fatigue, emotional disorder, mood swings, depression, impaired memory and concentration, stupor, dizziness, migraines, and vision impairment. I also suffer from chest pains, loss of smell, phantom smells, asthma, COPD symptoms, sleep apnea, nerve damage, and skin infections. On top of that, I have increased risk of contracting multiple cancers, chronic respiratory disease, cardiopulmonary disease, and worst of all, death. Keep in mind, these toxins for most people are a slow killer. Not alone, don't just take my word. I'm on the airborne hazard and open burn pit registry. There are over 174,000 registered vets suffering in at least one form or another from being exposed to the toxins burn pits produce that Rockwell will mass produce. My concern is for the children, teachers, and family members who will have inhalation, ingestion, and dermal exposure to toxins for extended periods of time, much longer than my exposure.
Sir, thank you for your comments.
Please vote no for the bond.
Hello. I assume Danny Lutz is not here. Many details have been brought to light over the past six months regarding your obligation to accept industrial waste, how to process the contents of it, and can CTEP handle it. I appreciate the scrutiny and the hours that you have given to this decision. Your discussions have analyzed numerous areas of these concerns raised by us citizens. One of them is the daily capacity of the wastewater treatment plant at 1.75 million gallons per day. Currently, you're at 1.34. And these are all details that you've recently discovered as you've been scrutinizing all of this information. And recently, you learned with this Route 9 sewer extension that we'll be adding 175,000 gallons with Burr Industrial Park, Rockwell, and the Shenandoah Junction. That takes you up to 1.51 million gallons per day. The trigger for an upgrade is 1.58. I know that you've had to realize that you are nearing capacity before, and this is all before the necessary Flowing Springs project. Many of the people in the room might not have paid attention to many of those details, but I know that you cannot ignore them. And this is before any other previously forecasted growth. Accepting this bond, facilitating unplanned development, would accelerate the need for an upgrade. If you want to talk about the impact to ratepayers, that's where you know you should be looking. We have a well-balanced means of living here compared to the standards of West Virginia. The old means of economic development have not proved successful for our state. Shut down the ill-conceived hidden industrial expansion of our community. Send the signal to the economic stakeholders, they must go back to the drawing board for Jefferson County and reject the Route 9 sewer bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly Ross, and then Nicola, and Eric Vance.
Good evening. The world around us is changing, and the access to information and the loss of privacy to individuals, corporations, and government is eroding many of our preconceived pillars of knowledge. This has happened to me. And I would say to those that are opposing it, if I just thought that the ratepayer issue and financial responsibility was the only thing, I'd probably be with you, but it's so much deeper than that. That's not the issue. The decision to oppose this sewer bond is easy if you examine the data and understand the enormous risks behind it. I have nine things that I'd like to point out why we should not allow this to go forward. One, Jefferson County does not have adequate infrastructure, as we all know, water, emergency services, roads, land, workforce, nor can we provide adequate services for such a huge risk for a plant sitting on top of the county's largest sinkhole, which creates an extremely high risk to groundwater contamination. Number two, the insulation product that Rockwell claims is a green product is not accepted as green in Denmark or the EU. The classification of this insulation is considered to be only slightly less dangerous than asbestos. Anybody heard of asbestos before? And may be challenged as a carcinogen in future testing. Number three, the proximity to our children's schools is a known and documented risk by the World Health Organization and the EPA. That's been said 100 times here. The valley in which we live experiences weather patterns called inversions that will not adequately disperse the tons of air pollutants that this plant will emit. You cannot compare it to Bihalia or any other place. This is Jefferson County that we're talking about, and we're talking about the citizens that live here. The types of pollutants, the hazardous chemicals and the particulate matter that will be emitted from Rockwell's plant is particularly alarming. That is documented over and over again. Those are known risks. Our county has the lowest unemployment rate in the state, can't even support the current demand for the jobs that Jefferson and Berkeley County have.
Ma'am, thank you for your comments.
The master plan doesn't have it. Let me say the last thing here. The pilot agreement is giving away money, and it was an illegal zoning thing. Please, as a leader, be responsible and make the right decision. Thank you very much.
And I'm beginning to, I'm going to read my conclusion first, just in case I get cut off. I urge you to postpone, at least to postpone, the decision in financing the sewer line to Rockwell and further such entities, whether by the state, our taxes just the same, or by a sewer bond. The facts are not yet assembled to justify a vote. Then I'll start from the beginning. I read in our Constitution of the United States that Congress shall assemble at least once a year. Life has certainly become more complicated since then. Climate change, for one, is a hugely complex issue. Even if the threat is only 10% of what many of us envision, 10% of polluted children is too high a risk and unnecessary other than to fill the pockets of a few. Victims of rape are the driving energy nowadays behind putting a halt to that crime. Victims of violation of earth and water and air are poised to become compassionate spokespeople to put a halt to those practices. We are but a drop in the bucket. Every drop creates a ripple. Do we not all agree that the development of vibrant local businesses is preferable to faraway entities? Do we not all agree?
Thank you for your comments. Eric Vance, M. Vowell, and John Outen.
Council members, I certainly thank you for taking time to listen to all of us. And I will say, there are two arguments here. There is one that is the majority, all my friends, family, and neighbors here, and they have articulated many facts and data that say that everything about this is immorally wrong, all right? Now, what I will say is that it's no, I'm sorry, I'm just a little lost for words, but regardless, what I'm saying is any aspect of you guys subsidizing a foreign entity to take money out of our local economy and then to pollute us is just immorally wrong. Doing that across the street from an elementary school is immorally wrong. Doing it in our Shenandoah River is immorally wrong, all right? We don't need to do it. You guys have the power to not at least have your part in subsidizing this, and I ask you to just please vote no on the sewer bond. You know we're the majority, contrary to what some of you guys think back there, but we know what's up, and you guys know what's up. And I really thank you for all your consideration and your time. I know we're all tired, and we all just want to get this moved on, but please just vote no for it, because subsidization for this is just, it's immoral, bottom line. Thank you.
M., so I have this as M. Vowell, John Outen, Jackie Milliron.
It's good to see everyone here. I haven't been to a meeting in a while. I'm a neighbor from Branson, and I'm just going to keep it short. I just want you to vote no on the sewer bond. Many people have spoken. You have read a lot of different information and emails from people, the majority, like the other person said, and what we've seen from the very beginning in August. So many people are opposed to this for so many different reasons. I don't understand what, it's not about politics, it's about survival. We need to survive in this county. We need to have a viable future for this county, and it's not about the sewer bond. You need to shut this down as fast as possible. Vote no on the sewer bond. Thank you.
Thank you, council, for listening to me. My information's a little bit more personal. My daughter died September 22nd, 2018. She was a healthy, young, 26-year-old from asthma, exasperation of chronic bronchial asthma. The pathologist said that the asthma overcame her so quickly, her sensitivity triggers were triggered by an external component. Her rescue inhaler never, she was never able to recover. Died right there. You have no idea the kind of things that this company is doing. You have only their side of it. I worked in major, major industry. I was in a nuclear facility with nuclear materials. They cover it up, but that's not the problem. The project engineer that I worked with told me, says, "The nukes will never kill you, but the chemicals will." This 2PB that's coming out... This 2PBB that's coming out across the street from an elementary school is hideous. I am telling you there is things that you have not considered on what it will do to your children. I ask you to please vote no. And I know you have your risk averse, but I'm telling you, you know the risk. If a... If the line is broken with industrial waste going down the line, who's going to pay for that? Is the county? Is the ratepayers going to pay for it? Or is Rockwell? You don't know. You do not have an idea. You need to study this a lot more. You need to get a lot more information. And I encourage you to delay your vote or vote no till you can find out and get the right information. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Milliron.
Good evening. No stranger to this council. I've attended meetings for several months, both CTUB and council meetings. So this is not the first time I've been before you with information that I hope has shed some light on the matter of the sewer bond. I cannot tell you how irritating it is for me to recommend approving the sewer bond that may appear to be a Trojan horse in the eyes of one who has fought persistently for ratepayer rights and lower rates. As you know, my public comments and conversation has been focused on utilities. So when I say Trojan horse, I refer to what is perhaps a hidden plain sight. The free money did come at a price. The price will be one of setting precedence as to the economic relationship with future developers and the achievement of rate equity. I learned a couple of things over these last several months. One is that the state has money for economic growth only when it's getting something in return. Otherwise, let's face it, the PSD project, pregnant with economic growth, would have been funded by the state on the same terms. I learned that many people knew about Rockwell Sewer Project simultaneous to the PSD project, yet no one thought to say, "Hey, those two projects were initiated by the same utility and serving the same geographical area and the same developers like the JCDI wanting capacity. But let's just approve it anyway, then give the free money to Ranson, but not to the PSD." To add insult to injury, I've had to grind my way through grueling meetings, listening to how developers somehow have the right to affect rates at liberty when for 10 years I have seen the PSC interpret Rule 5.5 in a different manner than what I have witnessed here. And this... Is this some sort of interpretation virus? I don't know. On February 4th, 2019, responds Mr. Levi, he recommended the council to seek independent consultation on interpretation of Rule 5.5. Was this done? In conclusion, I came here tonight to in fact persuade you not to take the sewer bond until two conditions are met. One, one or more of the council takes Mr. Levi's advice and seek an independent interpretation of 5.5 rule from the PSC. This is very important. At least one developer saw only 200 EDUs in 2016, yet in 2019 suddenly asked for 809.
Ma'am, thank you for your comments. Is Mike Donnelly in the room? If not, that's the end of the public speakers.
All right, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and speaking tonight. We'll move on to reports, mayor's report. I wanted to thank city staff, our police officers, and others who made this meeting room ready for tonight's meeting. Thank you, incredible job. Again, I'm going to give a special shout out to my wife Paula for her amazing support, and I love her very much. Let's go on to Ward 1, Mike Tolbert. Chad Heinz. Ward 2. Let's go with Nick. Ward 3. Ward 4.
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
All right, very good. Do we have any committee reports this evening?
Just the finance committee we did out, meeting on the 26th of February, basically in preparation for the budget workshop.
Perfect, thank you. Let's move on to the city manager's report. So I have nothing else? Police chief?
The only thing I have was January stats.
Thank you. All right, we're going to skip through the agenda here a little bit. We'll go on to 3249, fiscal year 2020 budgets, operating coal severance and capital improvements.
So Mr. Mayor, the... I mean, this is on here simply if we ran out of time through the workshop and there was additional questions from the council members. I don't think there's any action. Didn't sound like there was any action to be taken, so unless there's nothing else, I think we can move on.
All right, perfect. Let's move on to referrals to committees. 3243, referral to street committee, North Mildred Street.
I will make a motion that we refer the issues of North Mildred Street, the safety issues that have been alerted to us, to the street committee for further study and recommendation back to council.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Let's move on to approval of bills. 3247, bills for approval, March 4th, 2019.
Move we approve the bills?
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the bills are passed. All right, so now we're going back to the meat of tonight's business. I am going... I want to ensure partiality. As everyone knows, I'm a big supporter of Jefferson County Vision, so I am going to recuse myself for this item. And we will have our mayor pro tem, Ann Panessa, will be handling the rest of the discussions.
Question, why are you recusing yourself?
On the advice of the city attorney.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate everyone's very good civil behavior here this evening, and I hope we can continue that. I know this is a difficult issue for everybody here. Also, these chairs are murder on your back. Is anybody else standing, Fiona? I thought we needed them. Okay, so, gentlemen, the next item on the business, unfinished business is 3240. This is the second reading and final consideration of an ordinance authorizing the Charlestown Building Commission to the city of... Wait, I skipped a line there. Okay. Let's start that out. Charlestown Building Commission to the city of Charlestown approving the sale issue and delivery of not to exceed $16 million in lease revenue bonds, Series 2018, a West Virginia infrastructure fund by the Charlestown Building Commission to provide funds to finance the costs of such acquisition and design, acquisition, construction, and equipping and related costs and expenses, prescribing the forms and authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement and lease and other instruments and authorizing and approving other documents and matters relating to the terms, security of such Series 2018A bonds, and providing for certain other matters in connection therewith. Okay, so here is how we're going to do this. I'd like to get a main motion on the floor and a second to start out with, and then we can enter into some discussion and entertain the possibility of going into an executive session if advice of council is needed. So if I could get a main motion on the floor?
I move that we approve the state bonding financing for the Route 9 sewer project.
Okay, is there a second to that? Is there a second, gentlemen, to the motion to approve the sewer bound project?
I second, so we can get into discussion.
Okay. Then, do I have a motion to move to go into executive session to consult with our attorney under attorney-client privilege?
I'll go ahead and move that we enter an executive session citing attorney-client privilege.
Is there a second to that?
I'd like to know why. I'm a little... This is a really awkward deal.
Sure.
A little unclear why we need to go to executive session.
Mr. Funk, would you like to come before us to address that? Do we need to state the specific reason on the record as to why we want to confer with you? Or just on the issue in general? I think that's the nature of your question, is it not, Councilman Trainer?
It is.
I said, I think you may want to hear legal advice regarding the petition that was presented tonight and its applicability to your actions.
Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay. And did we have a second to that motion or not?
Not yet, you're waiting on a second.
I'm waiting on a second. Is there a second to move to go into executive session to discuss under attorney-client privilege, the petition submitted this evening?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that?
Well, it's not a debatable motion.
It's not... You're correct, that's not a debatable motion. Okay, so we'll go ahead and call a vote.
Can I just ask what exception is cited? There's 12 exceptions to the executive session order in the Open Government Meetings Act. What exception are we citing?
Attorney-client privilege.
That's not an exception.
Legal advice from counsel.
That's also not an exception.
All right, hang on. If I had service, I'd look it up. Otherwise, I don't have service, so someone's going to have to help me with that.
There's 12. I'm not... I just... I can't see which one we're citing here. I can give you them.
The Open Governmental Proceedings Act references FOIA. And FOIA, attorney-client privileges are protected under FOIA.
Can you?
Come on, folks, we got to remain orderly, please.
So, Mr. Brittingham, I think it's actually at the very end, after all of the items are listed, it then says, "In any other matter that would otherwise be protected by attorney-client privilege." I believe that's how that reads.
It says, "Or which is not considered a public record within the meaning of the Freedom of Information Act as set forth in Article 1..."
It's also the internal memorandum exception.
So is that the exception we're citing, number 12?
There are multiple bases, but that is one.
I'm just trying to figure out what exception we're citing to go into executive privilege or session, number 12.
I believe you have our memorandum on this topic, correct?
I do.
Yes, okay, as an internal memorandum.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the vote then. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we're going to move into executive session. You folks are welcome to stay in this room. We're going to go into a room. To clear us out of executive session, thank you for your patience with us this evening. And I'd like to read a statement on behalf of the council. After consultation with our legal counsel, we have determined a petition under West Virginia 8167 is not applicable to this particular action by this body. We'll now move into deliberations on the main motion, which was a motion to approve the sewer bond funding as presented, and I believe we had a second. Is there discussion?
There is discussion, this mayor.
Okay, Mr. Trainer, you're recognized.
So we have a couple of documents that we didn't get until Friday. I guess they weren't released by the DEP. So I really haven't had time to really go through them completely, but the answers to some of the questions that we asked at the public hearing in December, particularly question 14, is very concerning to me. In that, it says, I think most people probably already know this, it says, "Where feasible, the city of Charlestown may be required to provide sewer service by the Public Service Commission, PSC. However, this is limited to sanitary, which is domestic wastewater service only. It is the understanding of the West Virginia DEP that the city of Charlestown has not been mandated by the PSC to accept non-domestic wastewater." Now, we were told that when we were... Somebody had mentioned that verbally from the... That somebody had told them that at the hearing, we were told that that was not the case. I don't know if it is the case or it's not the case, but this is a direct contradiction to the fact that we have to provide sewer service and provide sewer service for that and accept that industrial waste. So I'm actually... I'm looking for some clarification. Do we have to do what? Does Charlestown Utilities have to accept industrial waste?
Without calling up a member... Would you like to address that for us, Kristen? I recall when we discussed it, what was said, but I think it'd be better off coming from you.
Sure. Back on January 22nd of this year, we provided specific responses to those questions with regard to our obligation to accept industrial waste. We provided the PSC sewer rules and the West Virginia Code, Chapter 24, Article 3, which clearly states that there's no differentiation between sewer, industrial, commercial, residential when it comes to the PSC regulations.
I understand, but there is a DEP, and you said that it was a DEP. So there's two state agencies are contradicting themselves, seems to me.
Agreed. The PSC rules, though, are very clear that there's no differentiation between industrial and any other sewer uses. We've confirmed that with senior PSC staff. I can't address why DEP is making these sort of statements when they are conflicting with the PSC regulations.
Because this is an official statement from them, seems to me, right?
Agreed, yes.
So, I tell you, Ms. Mayor, I would definitely feel more comfortable if I had a statement from the PSC that said, "Hey, you do have to accept this industrial waste stream from your customers," before I would vote on this issue or on the bond.
Is there more discussion on the motion?
I would recommend that we pull the motion and move to table this until we get an answer from PSC.
You're the mover of the main motion. Are you willing to withdraw your motion or not?
It requires a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Bob's motion to table requires a second prior to... Okay, excuse me, rookie. Do we have a second to that, motion to table?
Bob's motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to table and a second to that. This is as... Daryl, I need your help again. So we're voting on this as whether or not we'll even move forward to then get Chad to withdraw his motion and make that the main motion. Forgot that, right?
Well, we would vote on this motion because it takes precedent. Again, non-debatable, to table. So if I... I'm sorry, Councilman Trainer, could you say what's the date on which you'd say to reconsider it?
I did not give a date.
You did not say it. So you're proposing to table, not indefinitely, you're proposing to table until a response has been provided, right?
An official response from PSC on this particular issue.
Yeah, so a motion of second, non-debatable, as to whether or not to table. If it's tabled at that point, I mean, consideration of the main motion has been put aside, and we're done with the issue for today. If it fails, you know, we'll go back to the main motion and continue to debate it.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table and a second to table it until we receive that specific statement from the PSC. I guess I would raise at this time, even though it's not debatable, if there were any other issues in the interim that people wanted more information from in the interest of saving time, everyone's time, who came out tonight, that you might raise that now? In general? In general, I don't want to see this be a traveling horse where we table every time for a different reason and another piece of information. So I think it would be helpful if we were to bring anything similar to his desire to have that specific statement to the floor tonight so that staff or whatever regulatory agency can address that. agency can address that. Did you have anything to bring or no?
I think, I have my.
You just tried to debate.
But I think, I think.
Anybody else?
Just to clarify, Miss Major, Miss Mayor, I was prepared to vote until I actually read this tonight. So I'm not trying to kick the can down the road. I want to vote on this thing.
Right.
I just want to make sure that I have all the information. Because it was brought up that we do have a responsibility under democracy to our constituents, but we also have a responsibility to the law. We're supposed to carry out the law as well, so I want to make sure that we do that piece as well.
Okay. Okay, everybody, so we have a motion to table and a second on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is for table?
Yes, for table.
Let's make sure we get the count.
And no's?
One, two, three, four, five, the table?
No.
So just, do we have six to table or one to table?
He's voted to table. He just did a raise his hand.
So six, six to table. Brittingham, not table, okay. So, all right, I guess we're.
Do I have a motion to adjourn then?
I move. Yeah, and I second.
A second, on favor. Return.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you.